Seven o'clock, call me in order, please stand for pledge. Okay, any additions or corrections to the amendments of July 17th? Hearing none, motion to accept amendments.
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to accept financial report and payment of the bills.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Steve, you have budget amendment?
Yes, I have one budget amendment tonight. First budget amendment for the new fiscal year. Budget amendment number 2014-001. It's to recognize $1,200 of forfeited seeds funds and their funding at Human Resources Consulting Service.
Okay, motion to accept budget amendment number 20-2014-001.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to accept budget amendment 2014-001.
That's second to motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, this evening we have a presentation to make, certificate of recognition. Tell Mr. James Broadford. Come up front, please. He gets you some pictures there. This gentleman has served the town in quite a capacity here for quite a few years as one of our crossing guards. We weren't presenting with him because he's kind of got a retired a little bit and hang it up. We all do that. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton, certificate of recognition, Mr. James Broadford. Whereas James Broadford, a lifelong resident of Elton, raised five children with Ann, his wife, of 59 years. Whereas he only serves his country as an air force policeman in the United States Air Force. And whereas a dedicated crossing guard, he ensured the safety of our children on his post at Melbourne Boulevard in Thompson Drive for the last 10 years. He rarely missed a day, not asking for anything other than a safety vest and a raincoat. Therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Commissioners, Ms. Lucy Belton, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to this very important member of our public service here. The witness thereof, we have unto set our hands sincere to the Town of Elton the seventh day of August 2013. Mayor George Alferson, Charles Hicks Commissioner, and Apire Commissioner, Commissioner Charles Hicks, Commissioner Joe, Mayor George Javaski. We assume you're really appreciative, and I'm sure you'd kind of like to mention to Mayor George Javaski.
I'm gonna miss him more here. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Thank you years. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Can I say a few words, please?
Thank you. Hey, thanks for the raincoat. Ten years ago when I started, he gave me his raincoat.
Well, you want the back, we give you the other one.
Good. I may do that. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to say something. I have had the tremendous pleasure of knowing this phenomenal family for many, many years. And even though he worked for us for 10 years crossing, as a crossing guard, I know him as Mr. B. because together with his daughters, we had the Sunshine Kids in our daycare. And the children have loved this man for many, many, many years. All of them. And you've just been such a wonderful asset to the Town of Elton, I can't tell you. So it's been a pleasure to know you and for you to serve our town the way you have. We're so glad you're here.
Thank you.
I personally want to ditto that because I was gonna say exactly the same thing she said. But no, he's been a great asset to the Town of Elton and the family. I've known him for years and I really, really feel as though they're part of my family. So you're part of the community, you're my brother, sister, and my pop, if you want to call it. A good man.
You want to say anything?
I would just like to say, on behalf of the Mayor's and Commissioner and a former educator here in this county for many, many years, it's gonna be a disconnect with you and the children. But I know you'll miss them and, you know, I appreciate.
Check on them.
I appreciate what anybody does for children here because they're very important.
To me, they are.
Yes.
That's right.
I definitely want to ditto what everyone was saying. I've had the pleasure of seeing you since I moved here in '05. And my daughter attended Thompson Elementary. And I tell you, you know, it never, never actually got to know you, but waved to you. Most mornings going by to work. And I tell you, I just appreciate you looking out for the kids the way you did and your dedication, definitely be missed.
Thank you, sir.
Now, you're like one of the postmen. Neither rain nor snow is gonna keep you away from your job. And we do, certainly do appreciate everything you've done, I really do. You're very outstanding. It's gonna be hard to fill those shoes, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Need more.
Okay, Louis.
Okay, the first item on my agenda that I know you're wanting to support is the road restoration project. We have two bids to open. One bid received from Harmony Construction Company of Maryland Incorporated. Actually located in Wilmington Incorporated. Their bid to perform the work is $183,711.35.
Thanks for coming.
Thank everybody.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
The second bid received from Sands Construction LLC. And Sands Construction bids $219,870. I would tentatively recommend a little better, but we'll be back with a recommendation after we're at the review by public works. But if not, I would probably recommend a little better. We've used them four to do roadwork and they do good job.
Louis, if you can talk into the mic or talk a little bit, I know it's hard for someone to hear back there.
We'll bring a recommendation at the next meeting. We'll have to review. The next item I have is Coachman's Drive. This is Ray Dean. I sent out an email and a street assessment on this street. Coachman's Drive is located off Route 40 and tied in Elton Storage, A Storage Depot and rear to upper Sherwood Farm Brokers. Street about 40 feet width and 475 feet length. And under a public works agreement, the town agreed to accept the street from the Acorn Investment Company LLC. Public Works has looked at the street and we recommend that the board accept it at this time for the town street, Coachman's Drive.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the Coachman's Drive deed?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item I have, Eastern State Construction Service. We have a contract with that company to upgrade the Patriots Glen, Meadows at Elk Creek, and Warner Road home stations. And part of that work has been completed, but there's still work that has to be completed with respect to Warner Road and Meadows at Elk Creek. Resuming that contract and the discovery that the hatch at the wet well on Warner Road should be replaced, but wasn't initially included in the specification, we asked for a change order for a cost for a replacement of slab and wet well hatch from Eastern State. And they submitted a change order for $8,000 to form this work and was reviewed by our engineer. And he agreed with that price as being reasonable price. So I would recommend that the board accept change order number one from Eastern State Construction Service to install 48-inch by 72-inch hatch on the 11 by 11 by eight foot custom made slab.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept Eastern State's Construction Services Contract Change Order Number One?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item I have is a, received a letter, email actually, from the State Highway Administration about a project they're doing. They're going to resurface the road on Bell Hill, the intersection of Bell Hill 279 and 279 onto Delaware, Delaware Line. But also, part of that project, we'd like to incorporate a sidewalk connection there that links the parking ride of Bell Hill Road to the two bus stops, the dark bus stops. That's a dual word I put together, this will show you where the sidewalks will go. It's about 590 linear feet of five-foot wide sidewalk and pedestrian, I mean handicap ramps, pedestrian signals. And it'll go from the parking ride out to 279, over across Bell Hill Road, and across 279, go to McDonald's and Ascent's, and then catch the other dark bus stop. The State Highway will bear the construction and all the costs of the equipment. They only asked that once, they gave me a letter of support from town. And also, the town would have to accept maintenance of the sidewalk once it's constructed. And I would recommend that if they're willing to build this, that we would accept for maintenance. It allows connectivity for pedestrian safe crossing on 279 to connect the dark buses going to and from Newark from those two stops. The stops are already there. So these vehicles will cross the grass or run across the highway to get there and this would provide pedestrian safety. So I would recommend that the board authorize me to send a letter to State Highway to accept maintenance. And we also do a support letter for this project.
And 279's been paved already, they've got a lot of that work already done. Some of it's been paved already. All right, do I have a motion to accept the, for the State Highway for the maintenance of the sidewalk?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The office area, a letter of support and agreement for that. Let's see, that's all I had in the same as I had.
Okay, I just had, under old business, we adopted an ordinance from FEMA. And I got a letter from FEMA for the flood ordinance and stated that I am pleased to inform you that the ordinance number 5-23rd, adopted on June 5th, 2013, is in compliant with and assures the town's continuing participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The ordinance adopts Cecil County's updated flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate map that became effective on July 8th, 2013. So you can tell Gina she did a great job on getting that thing put together. I know that was something to put together. Another thing, when you talked about, last time, about the Delaware Avenue Bridge, and I had sent a letter to Delegate Rudolph and the Secretary. I received a letter back from, first of all, actually Delegate Rudolph called me and he's had a meeting with the State Highway and trying to work something out. But then I got this letter from the Secretary of Transportation. I don't know if he can still be of some help to us because he stated that the State Highway Administration has been working on the issues of the flooding and increased sediment deposit on Maryland 7 for a number of years. In 2010, S.H.A. raised the roadway and drainage approximately 1.7 feet such that the roadway profile grade of elevation matches the adjacent floodplain elevation. This has reduced sediment deposits on the roadway and helped minimize our efforts. Well, I gotta tell you, 100 tons was removed the other day. Well, I don't know how that minimized the sediment because 100 tons is a lot of sediment. I think I've seen the pile sitting out there by Delaware Avenue Bridge. He's also stated that all the studies conducted by S.H.A. show that the relief from the flooding in this area will not come from raising or lengthening the bridge, but from addressing the underlying issues of the creek upstream. And this one, we've already done. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers could potentially address this issue. Well, I think we've already went that route with them. So I would suggest, Louis, that we draft another letter and inform him that we've gone through that route. And that didn't seem to work. And unless he can help us with getting the bridge there somewhere and get it dredged by the state, okay. But the Army Corps of Engineers is not gonna do it. We need to find out if someone can dredge that sandbar that we got there.
I would like to add in there that it's starting to affect our wastewater plant, our water treatment plant. And that's an issue, another issue that has not been addressed with just the flooding, but it's starting to affect our wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, I'm sorry. And this could cause a big problem for the town if it actually does what some of the workers say that it's been a potential problem.
I thought we requested having them come here to be able to discuss this.
Right, actually a meeting.
You got a meeting.
This was before we already sent the letter on fire today.
Right, but I'm saying this needs to be around the table, separate Trentons, be here about the water plant. I mean, they need to really hear directly rather than a letter and they go write another letter back because it's not gonna happen that way.
Yeah, right, I mean, I agree. That way we can actually sit down and address all the issues that may arise or coming about.
Austin, you want to send an invitation to the Secretary of the Department of Transportation? Or do you want to?
I was gonna suggest that, you know, I know it's a little ways off here, but in November, we have the tour. He's coming to the tour at the library. And that's when we usually speak to him and let him know our concerns. If we wanted, we all could catch him there.
You know, I want our own meeting, not him on a tour in five minutes. And it doesn't have to be the secretary, it could be the department heads. Because we need, they need to see what we're going through and hear from everyone directly, not through a letter.
All right, well, see, I know he probably won't come, but, you know.
He'll probably send something by.
Right.
Okay, I'll send him.
But the letters should reply based on what they stated that they've done. And in answer to that letter that they just sent to us, these things have been addressed, but we're continuously getting the same problems. There's nothing that has been accomplished. But on top of that, the issue is the water plant. It's a bigger issue.
No, we cut it off a lot, now what are we saying?
We need to have a meeting.
I understand that.
You do need to get them here, that's.
Right, right.
You need to get them.
Do a nice show, pictures and everything.
Because he says, unfortunately, the issue cannot be addressed with the design of a new bridge as the issues are related directly to the flow of the water in and around the Big Al Creek.
Well, there's other issues also. It's the way the State Highway cleans up, throws it on our property, and then our tax dollars have to clean it up again. So there's a lot of issues here that they need to hear about face to face.
Right.
And while we're talking about the going back upstream, Commissioner Hicks and Commissioner Javaski, I invite you to go over to 150, walk in the man's yard and just look at the railroad trestle and see the pileup of debris and trees and branches that have come down from Pennsylvania. You would be amazed. I was over there the other morning with some people in that area and Earl was available, he came over and saw the same thing, it will amaze you. I think the man also said that Lawrence had been over there and obviously you've been over there too. Well, if you was there a year ago, what you're gonna see now is totally different. I mean, it's a pileup. You just wonder how trees could be piled up and the length of the trees and the size of the trees in an area. So you get time, just walk in the man's backyard and the trestle look down over the water. It's right over for Friendship Road.
The other thing he did mention too for this is that we requested the pedestrian crossway. He said the pedestrian bridge is now in design, design stage. We expect the design will be completed in the late spring of 2015. And the project is a construction candidate for the fiscal year 2016, starting in July of 2015. All right, let's see where we can go, but just keep hamming away at it. That's all the old business I have. Mary Jo?
I have no business.
I have nothing.
Any old business, Charlie?
No.
Any old business?
I guess it'll be old business. The, I remember talking about flooding and the basketball court over at the park. Are we able to fix that and get the backboard and go back up? Can we look at doing that?
Meadow Park?
Yeah, and the rare instance that it is dry and clean out there, they can actually use it?
It'll be a little while because it's this week.
I know, I know.
So we have to let it dry out, but we'll try to put it back together.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, once again, pleased to let it by now, Government Finance Office Association. Dear Mayor, Mayor Fisona, we are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012 qualifies you for the certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting of finance reporting. And it attains, represents, its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. Once again, Steve, we want to thank you and the staff for doing this again. I believe this is our ninth and second of year.
That's right.
Very good, congratulations again.
And it shows you that you keep by getting paid, doing a wonderful job, Mary. What better recognition?
Your recognition, you're too weird.
Yeah.
The other thing, we received a letter from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. Dear Mayor Fisona, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that the Board of Public Works has approved your request for community parks and playground funds regarding Meadow Park East Playground in Cecil County, which, to install new playground equipment and safety servicing consisting with national playground safety standards and the American Disabilities Act at Meadows Park in the amount of $28,000. Good from Mayor, we can get some more equipment down there. That's off to Mary. Also have a couple appointments tonight. We've had resignations off the Planning Commission. So I have two gentlemen that they'd be interested in fulfilling those positions. One of them is here this evening. David Horse. Okay, and Bill Galwin, William Galwin. Both are pretty much well qualified and they said they'd like to help us out with that. So if I could get a motion to accept that?
Salute.
Upset?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I think that's everything. I'm sure I didn't miss anything. Nope, fine. Okay, Mary Jo?
I just have two, I want to congratulate Steve and his team for all their good work for the financial department. And I also want to thank the Town of Elton Police Department for pairing up with Boys and Girls Club for National Night Out. It's done all over the United States. They did a fantastic job, especially Detective Andy Ture, who headed this up, did an unbelievable job. A lot of our officers volunteered all night cooking hot dogs and did a great job, so thank you so much. And Commissioner Piner for DJing also. But it was a great night throughout the entire county, so I just wanted to say thank you.
And I should echo that too, it was a good night because I was there and shame the weather didn't cooperate, but overall, I think it was a very successful evening.
Yeah, I think we counted close to 200 folks in and out throughout the three hours.
That's terrific. In the rain.
You're right, Corporal Andy Ture is.
Corporal, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Andy Ture is the one who really coordinated that whole effort.
He did.
That was great.
I too would like to thank the Police Works for all the efforts and hard work they put into it and all the volunteers that came out to help last night. Even though the rain, people thought they counseled them. I expected, I told them about 100 people, but I wasn't counting you, were.
Yeah, you were.
So that's pretty good to have a good turnout like that in the rain, so.
That was. Charlie, anything?
Mr. Norman Webster, the trustee at Providence United Methodist Church. We recently did some work there at the barber shop, which the church owns, and he wanted to thank the town for the work that they had done. I think Louis sent us an email previously and a picture showing us the remarkable job that was done. And he wanted to thank the town on behalf of the church. I'd like to see us have a dialogue with, I'm now acting the Chief of Police. We all supported you and recommended you, but I just think, you know, somewhere along the line, we need to have some dialogue. When you have a person going into a different position, they sometimes come with a different vision or a new vision. And I just think sometime that would be good. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do that.
And, you know, I offer that same because I was gonna say that, you know, we do have a new minister at the church. You see that in Cecil Wigg, you know, we had the other minister, people were finding him for so long. He's a 22-year veteran of the Baltimore City Police Department. Has crossed over into the ministry. I think your people will enjoy him if you come for the Martin Luther King celebration that we have each year. And again, he too replaces a man who's done an outstanding job, but he too has a different vision. So I just cross that over and the same thing I'm saying to the new person we have in charge.
How long was he in the police office?
Twenty-two years.
Wow.
And Commissioner Hicks talked about rubbing and I thank Dan and his department for coming and acknowledging the rubbing that was done on East High Street.
Well, it's done actually throughout town, it's looking better, they've gone around spraying.
Yeah, there's considerable amount of places.
They're doing very well. Very good. All I can do is echo. I tell you, I appreciate the work done and you can, it's noticeable right away. I appreciate what the police did as well because I tell you, I was unable to attend the National Boys and Girls Club night out because I was out of town. But I actually got phone calls saying, you know, hey, what's going on over there? And wow, this is pretty nice and, you know, it doesn't happen every year. So, you know, I told them to go by and see Mary Jo, but I got a lot of compliments about it. So, I mean, it's just adding to the good things about Elton in the downtown area. I want to thank Louis for, again, echoing, getting that corner of High Street and Collins taken care of. I appreciate that and so does the barber shop and the church, obviously. That's it.
All right, Keith Thomas, Thompson? Got a mic? Keep that close to you so you can. Just state your name and address, you can sit down.
Oh, I can sit down?
Yeah. It doesn't cost anything.
I had to stand up? Pull that towards you. Yeah, my name is Keith Thompson. My wife and I live at 707 Elton Boulevard in the Heights there, right off of Bridge Street. And it's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I want to reiterate a letter I wrote to the Cecil Wigg a couple weeks ago, giving kudos to the mayor and the commissioners for addressing a problem that I think is a real problem here in town and that is blighted and vacant structures.
a real problem here in town, and that is blighted and vacant structures. And I want to thank you personally for my wife and I for taking care of the RMR Building and the George's Restaurant Building. So we appreciate you handling those too. But that only seems to be a start of what we need to do here. And we're wasting valuable resources addressing problems in these buildings between our police force and the fire department. I had several fires out over there at the George's property. So to me, that's just a total waste of money, total waste of taxpayer money to go addressing those kind of properties. And I realize, I understand, there's a workshop next Wednesday at 4:00 PM to address some of these problems, and I plan on being here. But it's, it's just a start. I know we have a problem with having to raise our taxes here in town for this coming budget year, and certainly understand that. But we had that George's property that I know has been vacant for like nine years, at least nine years, and off and on for the last 20-some years. So I'd like to see the commissioners and the mayor put some kind of ordinance or something on blighted properties, vacant structures, and try to reap some benefits from these things, because they're just wasting our resources here in town. So hopefully, you all can come together, some kind of agreement with the property owners, take care of some of these structures, and maybe get this ordinance passed, because it's about time we take care of some of these places. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Janice Moore in Beverly, yours?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Beverly Ursick, I'm the Assistant Administrator at Short Haven School.
Put the mic towards you.
At Short Haven School. And that's at 1040 Singly Road. And Dr. Janice Moore is the Education Director for that program.
I am, and I am also a resident of Cecil County. I reside at Ten Lands Court in Elkton. Our purpose in coming tonight is to address the similar issue that was just presented. We do have a beautiful school property, which we, you know, promote and serve the most vulnerable adults and children in this area and throughout the state of Maryland, come to us to live in residence, and also students from Cecil County Public Schools. We take great pride in our school buildings. We take great pride in our group homes that are throughout Cecil County. But we are also gravely impacted by the presence of a building that's adjacent to our property, which is boarded. It does give the presentation that there are criminal activity there. I've had parents and caseworkers question whether or not there's drug activity. We've had squatters. The property is not well manicured, and it gives the presentation that as people arrive at our property, that that could possibly be related to what we do. And that's not the presentation that we want to make. So we ask that you take this very seriously and look into it and, you know, present in a way that will benefit all of us in Cecil County as residents, as taxpayers, as employers. We do employ more than 100 people, and, you know, that's a very big part of the economy here. So please consider it.
As, just to echo what Janice was saying, that in support of the action that I hear there's been discussion as to creating ordinance or to create an action plan for what to do with these vacant buildings. That building, our building, was built on that property. First of all, I should ask her, you're familiar with our school. I should have asked that to begin with, up on 1040. And you know that that vacant building is adjacent, the first thing you see approaching our building. We, the building was built in 2003. At that time, that property was, I believe, rented for a while. I'm trying to get a timeline on this. Around 2007, though, it has been vacant since 2007. Again, about a year ago, we were in touch with the owner of that property, because we kept seeing people around there, and he did instruct us to call the police if we saw people. Again, we did. We called the police. The police went out. Right after that is when it was boarded up, and it's been boarded up ever since. So I'd have to say it's about a year.
What is the address of that?
Of that? Of our building?
No, not yours.
I don't know. There's, the mailbox is gone.
What's your address?
1040.
1040, Singly.
The other problem that I see is that there's often unattended minors that are on the property that are not related to our school program, but come from the community that surrounds us. And the concern is for the safety of those children too, who are not attended to by adults, and in out of the grounds that are well, not well kept. Grass is often very high, the boarded up windows. There's a lot of safety issues that are potentially hazardous to these children that are just coming over from that surrounding townhome community. And, you know, without oversight for that, there's potential that a child could be injured.
Yeah, all those backyards where you are.
Yeah.
Comes right to the.
It sure does. And, you know, we love to see the children, and we love to see the children play, but we want to ensure that every child that's in anywhere in our community is safe. And it's just, it's very concerning. We can see what's happening in addition to, you know, the concern for our own program, but also for the community at large. So please consider that.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman?
Hey, officer.
Good evening.
All right, sir.
I think I'm going to pay with the chair. They stopped me from sitting on the table. They don't want me to sue you. I went to the workshop, and I mentioned to these people that I thought you had a very good discussion on the vacant building ordinance. And of course, you're going to bring that up next week, and I hope to be here too, to hear what you have to say. It looks to me like whatever decision you make, you're probably going to need additional manpower to make all the phone calls and write all the letters and do all the stuff that has to be done. And my only, and my suggestion is there that you consider cross-training between departments where you may have some additional time available in, could be any department really, and I'm not that familiar with your different departments, but where you could train people to make the calls, write the letters. You probably have a lot of typists around, stuff like that, to help. I think when you get started, it's going to be a big push. After you get the, get the problem, you know, start rolling down the road and get the problem resolved, then there'll be less work. But anyway, I just want to make that suggestion, because if you, if you look at it that way, you may have the resources available to do what you want to do. And that's, that's my only comment there. What, I'm continually interested in the budget, and I think at that same meeting, Louis George said you focus on the big areas like police and police support. I think that's important. The, the role there is you fish where the fish are. And so, if you, I think a couple things. If you look at the areas of overtime, all departments are $402,000, $402,000, $450. The police budget overtime is $264,000 versus $219,000 last year. Now, it seems to me there's a reason for that overtime. And it would seem to me if I, if I were looking at it, I would suggest that the reasons for the overtime be listed, that so that you all could see what they are and examine them. And then, and then you'd make a decision whether you want to spend the money on that or you don't want to spend the money on it. And maybe you'll, you know, maybe you'll stick with it, maybe you'll leave it. It's hard to say. But if you examine, in fact, all the overtime in the town here, if you look at, if you, if you get, if you get a listing of why it's, why it's there, and like I say, in most cases, I think there's a reason for it, is to look at the reason and see if the reason is justified and whether you want to support it. So if you get a listing, particularly from the police department, but from all the areas, I think that might help you to get the visibility of what you're talking about and be able to control it. So I wanted to mention that. I would also look, and when talking about the police, is the police support services to see, see what they're doing over there. You have new management, so new management will take a fresh look at it, I think, and be helpful to all of you. That's all I have.
Very good.
Boy, you're sitting there. I like to echo the one thing. That's the reason why I was saying, see what type of vision they have. And you're right, with new management, you know, come new changes. Secondly, you brought up a very good point, and Commissioner Hicks talked about that before. A lot of times, when you have people working and your personnel is thin, if they are cross-trained, it makes a difference in trying to get something accomplished. Of course, when you're doing cross-training, you got to make sure every I and every T is dotted. So I appreciate what you said as far as those points go.
Definitely echo that. A lot of those letters, form letters, you know, there's a lot we can do. So I really appreciate you, but, you know, you look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else, then we get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.